I'd like to call to order the Amberly Village Council Meeting of February 11, 2019. Please call to roll.
Rich Bardak?
Here.
Peg Conway?
Here.
Ed Hattenbach?
Here.
Alita Kaymine?
Here.
Tom Muthing?
Here.
Ray Warren?
Here.
Scott Larmour?
Here.
Kevin Frank?
Here.
Chief Wallace?
Here.
Rick Kay?
Here.
If everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is our minutes from our last meeting of January 14, 2019. These minutes were circulated in the council package. Are there any clarifications, changes, or anything for the minutes? If not, we consider the minutes approved. We will now move on to the finance report for December.
So at the February meeting, we get to talk about December 2018 financials. So you have in your packet the memo that summarizes the December expenses, and you also have the UAN packet that captures that particular month as well. But I'd like to spend some time this evening, because it is an end-of-the-year report, just to give you a little bit of perspective of how we did from a revenue as well as an expense side. So December revenues for 2018 came in at about $267,000. So that put us at a total for 2018 of $4.8 million. And we had some discussion at this during our Finance Committee meeting, because we do meet monthly on the village finances. That actually, we actually collected 101% of our estimated revenue for 2018. 2018's revenue was very similar in total to 2017, however, the difference was on the earnings tax side. The village had estimated earnings tax for 2018 to be $2,750,000. Turns out, our collections ended up being about $2.5 million. So we were about $250,000 short on the earnings tax side. And that was actually attributed to a couple of different things that we can identify. The first being that there had been prepayments of taxes in December of 2017 in anticipation of the federal tax law change. So some residents went ahead and advanced money to the village. We knew that was going to impact 2018, because we were actually receiving 2018 monies in December of 2017. So that was probably the most significant impact to us. And then the second one was that there was a change in the due date that affected tax collections in 2018. So the state has been making modifications over the last year and a half, two years, in regards to some due dates, and when they make those changes, that affects the village. But I also wanted to spend a little bit of time, because as I mentioned, the Finance Committee talks about, at least quarterly, they talk about the earnings tax collections. So in, for December, the earnings tax collections for that final quarter of the year, where we were significantly down was on the individual or the resident's side. And that goes back to my comment about there were prepayments that were made in December of 2017 that affected us. So that's where we felt the most significant dip in earnings tax. Net profit was up a little bit. Withholding was up, which is a good sign, because that's, that would represent employee withholding, so that would represent the business community. Overall, we were down about $175,000 in that fourth quarter. But as I think I always try to point out to the Finance Committee as well as to council, we try not to look at earnings tax as a snapshot or in a vacuum, because it is an ongoing trend, and we try to identify those trends. And for 2018, I think we have identified the two most significant impacts to the village from a financial standpoint. The good news, outside of the earnings tax being down, was that other revenues helped bolster the village's finances. So we did see increases in other areas. So the property tax that we collected in 2018 was higher than what we had anticipated. The homestead exemption, it's tied to the property tax, was also a little bit higher. The local government state fund, that is a fund that has been pretty steady over the years. That came in at about $60,000. We pretty much anticipated that particular amount. The JED's money, the arrangement that we have with Sycamore Township netted the village about $126,000 last year. So that has become a very good, reliable source of revenue. And I've mentioned this before, the cell tower rent at the north site has been a good source of revenue for us, about $90,000 coming off of the cell tower. Court fines were down in 2018, about $68,000 is what we collected there. But the amount of money that we collected on interest is, shows that we are finally getting some interest money, significant interest money, on our investments. So the village collected $186,000 last year in interest. That still pales in comparison to several years ago, but it's certainly a great improvement from what it was just a few years ago. So all of this contributed to the $4.8 million that the village collected in 2018. So on the expense side of it, the December expense was high, and it is always high. It was about $928,000. So when you contrast the $928,000 expense in December with the collection of $267,000 in revenue, it's, that's where part of the imbalance begins. But we anticipate that December is going to be a high month. One of those reasons is the insurance payment the council approves each December, that comes out before the end of the year. In addition, we also did our transfers to other funds in December, so that significantly impacted the December financials. The council had budgeted $5.1 million, and the village spent just slightly less than the $5.1 million. That included the $447,000 of transfers that went to other funds. And you may recall that there was a transfer to the stormwater fund last year in 2018 that we had not done in previous years. So that contributed to that. So the $4.1 million expense was about half a million dollars more than what we spent in 2017. It did represent the first year of the reduced police levy. So when the residents approved the police levy, that actually meant that the village was going to collect about $300,000 less for the police levy, which means the general fund had to absorb that. So there was a $300,000 hit to the general fund. We also were able, with council's approval, pay off a police fire pension debt that the village was aware of, made, became, made aware of, about $72,000. So we were able to eliminate that. We paid that off, which realizes a savings to the village in the long run. Our largest expense in the village is the police department, and without the $1.3 million in police levy funds that our residents pay towards that, the village would have spent more than our general fund takes in. So that police levy is a critical piece to fund our operations. The total police expenditures in 2018 was about, little over $3 million. So the general fund was kicking in almost $2 million of that to make up that difference. I believe that the expenditure, on the expenditure side, we have a good handle on expenditures. I believe our expenditures are controlled. They have been scrutinized. We do have a monthly meeting with the Finance Committee where we go over revenues as well as expenses, so there's an opportunity to talk about expense items that do occur here in the village. But we did end up, 2018, with a deficit. So this is the first year that we've entered into a deficit, and that turned out to be about $278,000. We had anticipated, when we budgeted in for the year 2018, we had anticipated about a $320,000 deficit. So we came in under that, about $278,000. The good news there is that we still ended the year with a positive unencumbered general fund balance of $5.6 million. So from that perspective, as we're able to move forward, that is what will sustain the village throughout. So that is the summary of the finances for 2018, and did want to mention that all this information is available on our website. We do have OpenGov, and we have OpenCheckbook that is available to anybody who wants to look at our expenses, or look at our revenues, or find out how we spend our money. So all that is available on the website. And likewise, we invite anybody to attend our Finance Committee meetings if they have an interest in this, or feel free to contact the administration, or the Finance Committee, or member of council for additional information. So that concludes my finance report for the month of December and concluding 2018.
Are there any questions for the mayor? Now we'll move on to committee reports, and first the welcome.
This is the third reading of ordinance 2018-13 amending the zoning code and regulation of accessory structures. The purpose is to consider modifications to the village zoning code as it relates to certain accessory structures. In early 2017, the planning commission and staff began reviewing several sections of the village zoning code to better clarify the intent or to recommend changes to bring codes up to today's standards. Specifically, the regulations addressed accessory structures. Can you hear me? No. Go on. Let's be closer. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The Law Committee thereafter met and made further revisions to ordinance 2018-13. I make a motion to approve changes that the Law Committee made to ordinance 2018-13 that were recommended by the Law Committee.
Second.
Can you hear me? Oh, he does?
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we amend ordinance 2018-13 in accordance with the recommendation from the Law Committee. Those, all of those amendments are included in the package, in the redlined version of the package, of the ordinance. So are there any questions or comments with respect to amendments?
I just want to confirm that the amendments were the ones from the, there have been no Law Committee meetings, there's been no amendments made since our, I mean, what we read last month is the same thing that's in front of us now.
That's correct.
Essentially.
That's correct. These are from the Law Committee of, I think, January 9th or something? It was early January.
Okay. Okay, I just want to be clear.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, it has been moved and seconded that we amend ordinance 2018-13 with the amendments recommended by the Law Committee. Please call to roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
I'd next make a motion to adopt revised ordinance 2018-13, ordinance amending the zoning code and regulation of accessory structures.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance, the amended ordinance Are there any questions or comments? Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt the amended ordinance 2018-13. Now, since these are amendments from the ordinance that was recommended by the Planning Commission, in accordance with our ordinance, the approval of this will require a vote of five council members in favor of this ordinance. So please call to roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
And certainly, we have a moratorium in place on the construction of accessory structures. Kevin, when is that naturally set to expire?
April 6th.
And I would like to make a motion to expedite the passage of this ordinance as an emergency, so that we can get this approved immediately, so that we can, any residents wishing to put up accessory structures are not limited by the moratorium.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2018-13 as an emergency measure, which will allow this ordinance to go into immediate effect, which will allow residents to then apply for approval under this ordinance as opposed to waiting for the normal 45-day waiting period. Are there any questions or comments?
By making it an emergency, then that means that residents, citizens cannot overturn it also, correct?
They cannot file a referendum with respect to that, yes.
Because normally, we try not to have emergencies.
Right. And in this case, you know, I think it's the balancing of that.
Versus the ability of people, I understand. I just wanted to be very clear on what it is we're doing here. Are you going to add something?
Well, I was going to clarify that this would also, which presented it, this would end the moratorium if this emergency clause is passed. And you're right, if there is a trade-off, residents would not be able to file for referendum by passing it as an emergency ordinance, but would also accelerate the time when residents start applying for their structures that have been on hold for a while.
Any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance, the amended ordinance 2018-13 in accordance with emergency measures, which will allow this to go into immediate effect. Please call to roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. We will now move on to the Streets, Public Utilities, and Stewards Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Streets Committee met on January 28th, and there are two resolutions before you today that relate the content of our meeting of about a few weeks ago. The first one relates to the purchase of a replacement dump truck. Can everyone hear me, by the way?
Yeah.
The village currently has four dump trucks purchased in 2008, 14, 2015, and one to be delivered later this calendar year. These dump trucks are used to deliver multiple services to the village, from snow plowing, salt spreading, brush and leaf collection, street and stormwater maintenance, just to name a few. The truck to be replaced is the oldest in the fleet from 2008. This is an international truck. While the truck has low mileage, about 38,000, it has, it's had considerable reliability issues and has been costly to maintain. In fact, a few months ago, may know that we had to come before council to get a, to pay for the cost of engine repair and brake replacement at a cost of over $16,000. The village estimates a 10-year life for its trucks. Between the life cycle, its poor reliability and expensive repairs, as well as planned budgeting for a new truck, maintenance requested that we replace this truck. The staff reviewed options and sought references for replacement, and is recommending Freightliner Truck Body chassis. Kaffenberger truck equipment is being sourced for related truck furnishings, including the stainless steel dump body, hydraulics, lighting, salt spreader, snowplow, brine spring system, among others. The prices from Freightliner and Kaffenberger were obtained from the State of Ohio purchasing contract, which is typically offered the best prices. The cost of the truck chassis from Freightliner is a little over $75,000, and from Kaffenberger over $63,000 for a total cost of $139,300. There'll be an additional cost of $500 for lettering and village logo applications. This brings the total cost to $139,503. Maintenance will also be following up on trade-in auction sale options for the current truck. So I move that council approve Resolution 2019-3, Resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract to purchase replacement dump truck and to sell the existing vehicle.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-3 authorizing the purchase of a new dump truck. Are there any questions or comments? I mean, the one comment I would make is, I think it's useful to point out that the lead time for these trucks is, I mean, the Councilman Warren mentioned that we're going to be taking delivery of a truck later this quarter. This truck was ordered, I think, 10, 10 or 11 months ago.
Right.
So the lead time is very substantial, so.
Could take up to a year for delivery, correct? Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-3 authorizing the village managers to enter into a contract for the purchase of a dump truck. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
The next item relates to Resolution 2019-4, purchase of a replacement loader. The 2004 case wheel loader is used by maintenance for several tasks, including pushing leaves, lifting and loading salt for winter operations, lifting and moving debris from storms, et cetera. The loader is used all year for these various tasks. As part of our long-term capital needs, the village targeted 15 years as the useful life of a loader, and the Finance Committee had budgeted for a loader for this calendar year. This loader is showing signs of deterioration. Maintenance reviewed several options for replacement and recommended a case wheel loader from Southeastern Equipment at a cost of approximately $175,000. Using the State of Ohio purchasing contract bid, reduced the price by 37% to approximately We've purchased equipment and services from Southeastern in the past, and we're quite satisfied with their services. Case manufacturer of the truck also offered a trade-in of $37,000 for a current loader, bringing the price to about $74,000. Added needing, added needed accessories brings the price to $81,000. Now, the Finance Committee's capital budget had originally, and unfortunately mistakenly budgeted $50,000 for this replacement. There were some, there's calculations on some figures. And so there's a difference of about $30,000. The village staff has identified savings in the general fund, which will cover this difference. So I move that council approve Resolution 2019-4, Resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract to purchase a replacement wheel loader, and authorize trade-in of existing equipment.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-4 authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract to purchase the front loader. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-4. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
And that concludes the Streets Committee report.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the Police and Fire Committee.
Okay, thank you. The Police-Fire Committee also met on January 28th to consider a number of items. The first concerns new weapons for the police department, which have been budgeted for this year. The police department's current weapons are serviceable, but not as capable as the suggested replacement. Current theory is that the 9-millimeter round is just as capable to stop a threat as the more expensive and heavier recoiling 40 caliber, which is currently what the department uses. So what is being proposed is individual handguns with also holsters and red dot sighting, which is an enhancement from the current equipment. The red dot sighted pistol system allows officers to be more accurate, while also allowing them to remain threat-focused, instead of having to shift focus from their iron sights to the threat. The red dot sights also offer a more visible sight picture in low-light conditions, which are a common instance in police use of firearms. They will also have backup iron sights, which are higher than standard sights, so that they can co-witness with the red dot. The backup iron sights help align the red dot more rapidly during shooting, and their need is mandatory in the case of a failure of the primary red dot sight. The trade-in value of our current firearms is $6,095, making the total cost after trade-in allowance to be $18,636. The purchase will be made from Vance's Law Enforcement. $15,500 had been budgeted in the 2019 capital budget for weapon replacements, and the additional cost will likely come out of the police department's drug fund. So therefore, I recommend that we adopt Resolution Number 2019-5, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract to purchase weapons for the police department. So move.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-5, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract for the purchase of new police weapons. Any questions or comments? Chief, did you want to make any comments? Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-5. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next up is some minor changes to our mutual aid agreement. The village participates in the Hamilton County Mutual Aid Agreement for Law Enforcement, which is a general agreement for when police departments assist each other across jurisdictional lines. Very minor editorial changes, specifically to reference a mobile field force team which has been created. It's deployed in certain situations. It's less aggressive and lethal than a SWAT team, and there are a few other terminology changes, so it was nothing substantial. So therefore, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2019-6, authorizing the village manager to execute a mutual aid agreement with Hamilton County and participating agencies for law enforcement. So move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-6, authorizing the village manager to amend and enter into the new mutual aid agreement. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-6. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, and the next two resolutions we'll consider sort of together, they concern vehicle replacement. The 2019 budget provides $40,000 for normal vehicle replacement in the police department. The chief at the meeting of the committee presented a plan to sell an older, unmarked Crown Victoria and a 2010 Ford Explorer, and then to purchase two vehicles, one which would be for his use and the other for police and administrative use. So the first, we'll look first at the resolution concerning the truck for the chief. To replace, they've identified a used 2018 Dodge Ram that can be purchased to replace the current administration vehicle driven by the police chief. It is equipped with side compartments for storage. It will be driven as an unmarked vehicle that responds on all fire runs and can assist with salvage runs along with moving large items. The price for the one used 2018 Dodge Ram 1500 truck delivered is $33,619. Funding for this purchase will come from two sources. $8,000 will come from the police department's drug fund, and the balance of $25,619 will come out of the general fund. And then the balance of the $40,000 will be used on the next vehicle. So accordingly, I would like to move that we adopt Resolution Number 2019-7, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract to purchase a used vehicle for the police department. As described.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-7, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract for the purchase of a used 2018 Dodge Ram truck. Any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-7. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, and then the other vehicle to propose for purchase is another used, this is a 2017 Nissan Rogue that has 43,474 miles, to be purchased from Hertz Car Sales of London at a price of $14,985, which is the balance from the $40,000 budgeted for vehicles. So therefore, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2019-8, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract to purchase a used administrative vehicle for the police department.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-8, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract to purchase a used vehicle for administrative use in the police department. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2019-8. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the managers' report.
There was one item included in your packet. It is the 2018 financial statement, and this is a document that's required of all local government jurisdictions. It must be.
It must be submitted to the Auditor of State, so it's referred to as the 2018 Annual Financial Statement. It is a, it mirrors the financial information that we have here at the village. It's just in a very different format. It's in a fund accounting format, so it's not easy to read for the layperson or if you're not familiar with fund accounting. But it is a document that we are required to submit, and it is prepared by Finance Administrator Kathy Harcourt, and we do make it available online. We actually are required to advertise in a public circulated newspaper that it is available here for residents. So, we have it on our website under our financial information. It's also located in the Administrative Office if somebody would like to come forth and be able to take a look at it, and certainly staff is available to assist in talking with any residents that would like to know more about the 2018 financial report. At the last council meeting on, in January, it was Nicole Browder had provided me notice on that day that she was leaving for another position, and I failed to point that out during the council meeting. We obviously had celebrated after that fact, but I failed to mention that during the council meeting. So, Nicole's last council meeting was in January, so we're currently in the process of recruiting for that position. Nicole has spent 12 and a half years here at the village and done an excellent job, and we wish her the best in her future endeavors. And then on a sad note, we are losing Law Director Kevin Frank. Kevin is leaving Wooden Lamping. Kevin has been our solicitor since 2010, and since he's leaving Wooden Lamping, we're losing him as our Law Director, and he will be extremely missed, especially by the staff and I know by council as well. One of the advantages of the law firm of Wooden Lamping, whom we contract for this service, is their municipal side of the business. That's one of their areas of expertise. So, through Kevin's recommendation, we've moved Kevin McDonough into that slot so that Kevin McDonough can continue the continuity, and we're glad that he chose the same name to be our Law Director. But the Law Committee will be convening later this month to meet and interact with Kevin McDonough, and then we'll be able to move forward from that point. So, we certainly wish Kevin the best. That concludes my report.
Okay, Kevin, I mean, I was going to say something in the Mayor's Report, but I think right now, on behalf of the entire council, the entire Amherly Village community, we really do appreciate your eight, or nine years of service. You really made a big difference, and I think you, your practical approach to law, specifically in the municipality, was very much appreciated. And, you know, your help in helping us manage legal costs and everything like that, very much appreciated. You did a great job, and I think the city of Cincinnati is very lucky to get you.
Thank you, that's very nice. Probably my first and last standing ovation. Thank you.
We'll now move on to the Chief's Report.
I'm going to follow up on the Kevin thing. You know, I was promoted to Chief a year after Kevin got here, started doing his stuff, and the guidance and everything you've given me over the past seven years to help me have the tools in place was greatly appreciated. Not only that, but the friendship, it really meant a lot to me. I can, there's a lot of times that I called Kevin, and I guarantee you, the village never got built for it, and he just knew that he was taking a call, and he was always willing to assist me. I think your choice of Kevin McDonough is unbelievable because Kevin is, you know, a great guy. He knows the criminal side, he knows the civil side, and I think he'll be a great asset to the village in the future. But on behalf of myself and the department, thanks for everything you've done for us. I know it seemed like we did a lot of purchases already tonight for the Police Department beginning of the year, but we're trying to, you know, rotate some fleet around. We did get rid of one of the cars we said today, sold that and got the check today, and then we're going to continue that. The good thing is, is even though we made these, you know, fairly large purchases, this, our overall increase of the budget was still very minimal as a whole for the Police Department. I'd have to check with Scott, but I believe it was under 5% from one year to the next, which, you know, I think really says a lot about the ideas that people are coming with of, you know, producing these weapons and doing these different things. They're not just, you know, grabbing out a hat and presenting it. You know, Sergeant Shaw, John Burton, Mark Robbins, they've worked on this for the past couple of years trying to figure out what's the best avenue for the village, what would, you know, reduce liabilities and what would make things better, and they've done that. So, I commend those guys for being able to get that together and, you know, do it the way we have. The ability to use our drug fund on something like this is a great opportunity to take some of the burden off the general fund. As you know, in law enforcement, this has been a trying beginning of the year with the fatalities of Officer Dale Woods as well as Detective Bill Brewer. My position on the S.H.I.E.L.D. is I meet with the families, and it's probably one of the hardest positions that I've had since I became a policeman. Sitting in front of Bill Brewer's wife on Monday, hearing stories of Braxton, you know, the things he's going through as a seven-year-old, it just brings tears to your eyes, and it's all you can do is keep from, you know, breaking down. But, you know, I, council praises our guys a lot and how much it means, but I just want to tell you that, you know, we have a great department and, you know, something we never want to experience, but I'll just tell you as a chief, it's something you think about every day. You know, I think about that on the fire side, and I think about it on the police side, and your biggest fear every night when you go to bed, you think of something happening, you know, and you never want that, you know, happen on your watch as you run a department or even while you're, you know, to even know that it happened. I had the ability to meet with Chief Leahy too, and had a nice conversation, and, you know, he did a great job with the funeral, how he presented things, and I think he hit it for all law enforcement. But I just appreciate the community we work in because of this even more today than I ever have. The fact that we drive down the streets on a regular basis, and our residents wave to us, they speak to us, they send us messages on social media, that doesn't happen in every other community. When I was riding in the funeral for Brewer, there was, 99% of the people were happy to see you, they're standing on the side of the roads and really showing their support toward law enforcement. The sad thing is, they show the support when someone loses a life or seriously injured, and we just hope that, you know, people realize that, you know, we need that support all year long. The pressure that's put on law enforcement now is, really, it's bad. We are facing a lot of law enforcement individual officer suicides, and a lot of this tends to happen because of the fact that you're in a job that you're dealing with people on a daily basis, you're fighting with people, you're being called names, but you can't retaliate. You can't, you can't exchange words back with them. If you do, you're in the public eye, and, you know, at the end of the day, we're still human. But I just, I know our council shows that appreciation to us and our residents show it. I just only wish that would happen all over throughout the United States, throughout the city of Cincinnati. Nothing's more disheartening than seeing somebody on the, when you're driving the funeral and seeing somebody upset that they're having to sit and wait for this to go by, and you can tell by their body expressions or gestures that they're not happy. But overall, I just, you know, I'm proud that I work here, I'm proud that I work for everyone here, council, the village, and I appreciate the support. Your support is so much greater than what you know. So, thank you.
Okay, and this is part of my, first time on my Mayor's Report, as a follow-up to that, you mentioned the S.H.I.E.L.D. The chief, I saw on Channel 9 earlier this evening, because Channel 9 was running a phone athon to help support the S.H.I.E.L.D. The S.H.I.E.L.D. is a great charity. It has no administrative expenses. The great thing is, all the police officers really step in to perform that administrative function. So, to the extent that any residents want to help out and show a little bit of support to our police forces, the S.H.I.E.L.D. is a great charity to help support, and you can make the contribution through the chief, et cetera. And I also, in watching the phoneathon, Rabbi Mendy was manning the phones to help support, as well as many other police officers were sitting there manning the phones during the police, during this phoneathon. So, you know, the S.H.I.E.L.D. is one that you hope that the funds are never needed, but in this time of the fatalities, the S.H.I.E.L.D. is stressed to come up with the funds to help with the families and so forth. So, you know, if people, if residents can see an opportunity to give a little bit, as I say, it's a great charity.
You can give online, the S.H.I.E.L.D. of Ohio.
Okay, and then the only other thing I wanted to mention in my Mayor's Report is the Environmental Security Committee will meet on February 25th. We are meeting this month at 5:00 in the evening, and the reason we're meeting earlier is because the, we're, as part of this meeting, we are going to be going through the, another assessment with the We Thrive program to again, we go through this every two years to assess our current stat, current status, and to come up with an action plan for the next two years. So, this will be from 5 to 7 down in the community room on the 25th of February. And that concludes my Mayor's Report. Is it, are there any questions? Any new business?
Yeah, thank you. The Vice Mayor's not here, but while you're talking about We Thrive, everybody's reports were connected to each other. So, this Wednesday, the 13th, at 7:00 PM is the meeting about the chronic disease pathway of We Thrive, which is the, kind of our next foray into We Thrive, and so that committee is being chaired by Carol Donnellan, who's a resident of the village, but that meeting is 7:00 PM in the community room this Wednesday, the 13th.
The time has changed to 6:30.
The time has changed to 6:30. I've been informed.
It's 6:30 because everybody thought it was so late.
6:30. 6:30 this Wednesday, the 13th. Thank you.
Sorry. Any other business? One item before we adjourn, you know, we have a very diverse residence group, but this evening we have a local Boy Scout who is earning his merit badge as part of attending the meeting, and we just want to recognize your attendance. Thank you so much for attending and thinking of us. You know, we welcome anyone to come to our council meetings, whether it be for a merit badge or just to gain information. It's a great opportunity to hear what's going on in our village. And with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting.